Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our Monday, April 22 Fayetteville City Council meeting in order. We certainly welcome those who are in the audience today and a lot of the families are here for special occasions tonight, and we welcome you. We also like to welcome those who are joining us remotely. So at this time, we would ask that Pastor Woodhouse from the Hay Street United Methodist Church would come, ask that everyone would stand for the prayer immediately following the prayer if we could repeat the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the city of Fayetteville. We thank you for these elected officials who serve our city. We thank you for the staff and employees who work diligently to see that all of the citizens of our community thrive. We ask that you would send your Holy Spirit to give guidance to these council members and to our mayor and to each person gathered in this room, that they would be able to deliberate with one another in ways that are pleasing in your sight and upbuilding for our community. We thank you for giving them wisdom and guidance. We thank you that they have the best interest of our community at heart, and we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, Pastor. If you would, just briefly tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry. I know you joined us for coffee with the mayor, so we just want to introduce yourself to everyone if you could.
Yes, sir. I'm David Woodhouse. I serve as the pastor at Hay Street United Methodist Church, just across the road over here on the corner of Hay and Ray. And, yeah, that way. And you may or may not know, but Hay Street traces its history back to 1796 and a gentleman named Henry Evans, who was a cobbler and a Methodist preacher, a man of color who was free. And he came through Fayetteville on his way down to Charleston and ended up staying here and built the first church building in our city back in those early days. And eventually, the Methodists moved up here to the corner of Hay and Ray in 1834, and we've been there ever since, and we share that combined history with the good folks down there at Evans Metropolitan AMEZ Church. So I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. God bless all of you.
God bless you. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, council and those who are visiting, we have a very special moment. We're issuing the oath of office to our new city attorney. Attorney Pulliam, if you would, meet me at the podium so that we can take the oath. And you want to have a family member join for holding the Bible or whoever you'd like? If they could also meet us at the podium.
Family can join.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, as I read the oath of office, attorney, I ask that you raise your right hand if you could repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, LaShelle Holmes Pulliam.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support and maintain the Constitution
That I will support and maintain the Constitution
And the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of my office as city attorney for Fayetteville, North Carolina
Of my office as city attorney for Fayetteville, North Carolina
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. This one's a little awkward, but maybe if I come this way. First, I have to give thanks to the Most High Creator of all creation and give much thanks to my husband Glenn here on the front row, got my big brother Raheem, my sister Alicia, I've got my oldest daughter Verlana, my granddaughter Sala, my middle daughter Soraya, my second oldest daughter Skylar, my only son on the end here Abel, my little brother Brandon, my other little brother Isaac Michael, my father and my mother-in-law. So thanks to everybody for coming to support me. And thank you to council for your vote of confidence. You know I won't let you down.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Pulliam and family. So congratulations, and we know that you have done a great job and we're sure that you'll continue to do that. So thank you and welcome, officially welcome. You've been with us already, but officially welcome. All right, council, moving on to the next item, proclamation, which will be presented to Mr. Christopher Colley, Economic and Community Development Director, and his team, if they could meet me at the podium.
Good team. Good team.
Whereas the month of April 2024 has been designated as National Community Development Month to celebrate the profession of community economic development. And whereas Economic and Community Development Department utilizes federal, state, and local funding to implement programs and fund nonprofit organizations to make significant impacts on our community throughout creating and sustaining affordable housing, developing and growing small, minority, woman-owned, and disadvantaged small businesses, engaging with partners to address growth, and providing partnerships and resources to neighborhoods. And whereas the Economic and Community Development Department creates and manages programs that directly affect lives in our community, such as small businesses, programs, and technical support, emergency housing rehabilitation, and home repair, new affordable housing developments, targeted neighborhood revitalization, first-time homebuyer programs, and community partnerships with nonprofits and developers. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than 208 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of April 2024 as National Community Development Month and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the Economic and Community Development Department, which has made tremendous contributions to the vitality and well-being of our community throughout active engagement with neighborhood, community partners, and private sector to build a stronger economy for the community for all. And witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand of the cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 22nd day of April 2024, Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Friday, stand up. I know y'all short, okay? There you go. All right, y'all ready? All right. Congratulations, guys. They do a lot, and you know, 90% of the calls we get, from grant money to I need something in my neighborhood, to home repair, to want to buy a home, what's the city have in this program or that, 90% of it runs through those guys, so we appreciate the hard work you all are doing for citizens of the city. Councilors, we move forward. Have another announcement. I'll go to Councilmember Mario Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Just wanted to share this quick announcement on behalf of the many Golden Bulls in the audience and on the diocese, that an in-person town hall meeting will be happening tomorrow, Tuesday, April 23 at 5:30 PM at 1800 Seabrook in the auditorium, to discuss the potential construction of a new E. Smith High School. It's just a notice for everyone who's interested to be there again tomorrow at 5:30 PM at the auditorium at 1800 Seabrook. Thank you.
All right, council, with that, we'll conclude our announcements. I'll move to the city manager's report. Oh, we have a recognition. Where is my special guest at? I can have Ms. Harris, her and her mother, I guess, could meet me at the podium. Yeah, this. I'll read it from there. Counsel, I just wanted to take a point of privilege just for a moment to brag on one of our very own here, this young lady went up to the Apollo in New York and won the competition twice. So she represents our area. She's an honor student at one of our local Comer County schools and well on her way. So she becomes the next mega star. I want you to remember your mayor, okay? All right. So I want to just present a certificate of excellence as a token of our appreciation on behalf of the city council, and it's presented to Ms. Terilyn Harris in recognition of your hard work, dedication, and outstanding performance as a young gospel singer who graced the stage of the legendary Apollo Theater and represented us well. So thank you.
Y'all want to have words? We just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Terilyn is definitely a wonderful young lady. She's been singing since the age of six. We knew she was singing since the age of six. She's been performing since the age of six. She signed to her own label at about 11, so she's been putting out music ever since. She actually traveled there several times. She actually also took a bus from the community. She took a chartered bus and brought some of the local kids that's never been to New York and some of the local people from the area to New York to represent and support her. So we certainly appreciate the community for supporting her and her endeavors. Like I said, just be paying attention to the name because she is a wonderful, wonderful gospel singer. And we thank God for the platform. We thank God for the opportunity, and we certainly thank you, Mr. Mitch Colvin, for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Keep up the good work, and don't forget your mayor, okay? All right. So councilors, we move to the next item. We'll move to the city manager's report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started, I would like to yield to my newest colleague, city attorney.
Thank you, council and city manager. I'm sorry, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention my mother, Adrienne Thomas, who worked for the city for 30 and a half years before she passed. I don't know, I got caught up in the moment, but I have to honor her. But when I was working in Georgia, she would always tell me, when she worked with the city attorneys here, that she would tell them that her daughter could do that, and now I'm doing it. So thank you.
That's a great story, so definitely. All right, Mr. Hewitt.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We have several items tonight. I'd first like to call on Assistant City Manager Jody Phelps to come up and talk to you about the Public Safety and OCS Summit that we're planning later this month.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Certainly wanted to remind the public and let everyone know that the Public Safety Summit is this month, on the 30th. It will be at 1 PM at Fayetteville State University in the Student Center. We're grateful to the chancellor and the university for allowing us to use that lovely space. Staff have finalized most of the details and logistics, and Christopher Williamson, the city manager's office, has worked incredibly hard on that. We have several dozen confirmed attendees across a very broad cross-section of organizations and community groups and professionals that deal in the spaces that the Office of Community Safety may work in, the mental health, homelessness, violence prevention, and youth violence intervention, and those are in no particular order. This may and potentially be one of the broadest cross-sections of groups and professionals that this city has brought together to address these issues, and we're really excited to be able to do that. What we hope to get out of this is a really robust dialogue that will help you in your conversations as we move forward with the Office of Community Safety get somewhat of a landscape analysis, so we can look at what services exist in this community, what does the community need, where are the gaps, and where can we be most effective and impactful using the data that we will evaluate and look at? And with all of that, once the director is in place, hopefully this will create a foundation and a built-in network for them to rely upon trusted partners in the organization. I want to make sure that I mention this is not in staff's view, a one-and-done for community involvement and engagement. I think what we see, and hopefully what the new director and hopefully this council will see, is that we need to continue to engage with the community and discuss this as we move forward. So, subject to any of your questions, we are always available. I just want to say I appreciate the council for continuing to suggest partners to bring to the table. We appreciate that. We want to continue that. Even if they are not able to participate in this, we will continue that dialogue with them and make sure we have a robust group of partners.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. I just have one question. When did you change titles on me? How did I miss that?
I did it while everybody was sleeping in the middle of the night.
Well, congratulations, Assistant City Manager. You were working hard.
Thank you, council.
So thank you. Counsel, so and to the public, we certainly look forward to having you attend either virtually or in person. You know, certainly we're limited on capacity, so virtually, we want to make this a community discussion as we build out Officer Community Safety, you know, several council members, the majority or the, all of the council members, I will take a point of privilege to say that, certainly support this new office that we're building out, and we need the community's help, because it's only successful if you and the partners are with us every step of the way. And so this kicks off a meeting, but as you said, there will be more to follow and more to come, and we have certain council members, and I know Councilmember Benevente, don't start that, so. So he's talking about the money part, but certainly this is a good thing for our community as we address those issues. So thank you. Mr. Manager, you had some other?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also, Nelson, if you would, come forward briefly. Wanted to draw counsel and the public's attention to our two administrative reports tonight that we have. One is an administrative report, update on Broaddale Community Historic Survey.
Yeah, thank you, city manager. So Nelson Soriano is our new Neighborhood Engagement Manager, joined the department just under six months ago, so I'm going to be pitch-hitting for him here. But we've been working since before Nelson got here for quite a while now on working with local community members in the Broaddale area on historic preservation of the just amazing story of that community and how it came to be what it is today. So the first thing that we did in that process is applied for a certified local government grant from the North Carolina Department of Historic Preservation. We got that grant, hired these amazing architects that specialize in African-American history. They came in, they did an architectural survey of the property, they did community roundtable meetings with elders, they went to E. Smith and FSU and looked through the archives and met with historians there, and then they put a package together and submitted that to the state. The state then approved the Broaddale community to be on their historic list of places to study. And so that concluded that first step in the process. And so right now, Nelson is working with our team to apply for a second grant. That next grant will be to write the nomination to put the Broaddale community on the National Register of Historic Places, and that grant is due
May 10.
May 10. So we're wrapping that up pretty soon here. We wanted to make sure that council knew through the administrative report that we did successfully complete that first piece and that the state approved this area for its historic significance, and we've got many steps to take. We've had some feedback from the community about what this means for them as property owners and what this means locally. I would ask council to let us get through this national register piece, and we'd love to come back and talk about, you know, some of the local decisions that can be made to preserve that history. It gets very technical, and I'd be handing it over to Dr. Newton's shop at that point, and he'd be the expert to talk there about some of that stuff. But we definitely want to keep this project moving, and with successful grant submission on May 10, we'll have a shot at the National Archives.
Well, thank you, Mr. Colley. Councilmember Har, you had anything?
Just want to echo and say thank you. I wanted the community to, even though they are aware of what's been going on, being a dual, representing that community between myself and Councilmember Mario, just wanted to make sure that they heard that and were aware of that. I own a couple of properties in that neighborhood. Even the house that I live in was built in 1953, so, and we're the second owners. So we are four-speed ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, and echo all of that. Broaddale, grew up over there, Stanbury Street, so glad to see that. And I'm sure the residents will have questions about what this classification or designation will mean for changes to the property and that kind of thing. Can you speak to that just a second?
Yeah, so right now, nothing's changing, but to that point, we have been extremely involved with the residents there, with the Community Watch Group. They have been pushing us just as much as some of the city council members have, if not more. That is a firm commitment from us. That's what we do every day, is community engagement and development, and that's why Nelson is spearheading that, so that every step of the way, we meet with those community members and let them know what's happening and what's going to happen next. But that's first and foremost. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And there's also been a survey, Mayor, so the community is aware.
Good. Thank you. All right, council, Mr. Manager, that's it?
One other item, sir. We also have administrative report regarding a potential text amendment regarding tobacco and hemp retail stores, and at the appropriate location, I think it's administrative report's under 10. We'd welcome council's consideration of one of both of those items moving to your work session or for you to give us further direction. But with that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, Councilmember Har.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can we make that motion now? I thought I was going to wait till we got to 10-point, what is it, 02, but if I can make it now, I will.
Well, she's saying, she's suggesting should just we wait till we get to that?
Wait till I get, okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right, I'll come back to you.
Yes, sir.
All right, council, moving on to the agenda approval, if we can have a motion to approve the agenda. We're working off of our iPads. Let's see, Ms. Jennifer, I need to clear this.
Mayor Colvin, Councilmember Green, you good? Okay.
All right. All right, so motion to approve that, guys. All right, and I need to clear my screen, Jennifer, whenever you get a chance, for those in queue that weren't wanting to speak. Yeah. All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Har, second, is there a second? Second about Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, discussion on a motion. All right, council, look to you for your votes to approve. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Moving to the consent items. Council, I'll look to you for action on that. Is that Councilmember Benevente, is that your hand?
Yes, Mayor Colvin. To approve the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second by Councilmember Davis? All right, discussion on that, motion. All right, council, look to you for action on that. All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Moving to the public hearing. All right, council, this is a moment where we're preparing now to hold a public hearings where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak at the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the beginning of tonight's meeting. We begin with the staff presentation, then we'll move into the formal hearing. 15 minutes will be allowed for each, for those in favor and those opposed of the item concerned or discussed in the hearing. Individual speakers, however, are limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case that spokesperson may use the entire time. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and then you may begin to address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means that you have 30 seconds remaining, and at the conclusion of your time, it will change to red, or you will hear a timer ring, and that will be the end of your time. At this point, I will stop and give way to the staff. Mr. Colley, you're back again.
Yes, sir. I'm back briefly to go over our brief presentation on the city's annual action plan. So council saw this at the April work session, so this is just a recap of that for the purposes of the public hearing. Just a quick overview, we get three federal grants called entitlements, the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Housing for Opportunities for People with HIV and AIDS. We call those CDBG, Home, and HAPWA. They're pretty simple in idea and very complicated in execution. CDBG benefits low and moderate income people and helps neighborhoods remove slum and blight. Home creates more affordable housing in our community, and HAPWA helps those folks living with HIV and AIDS through mortgage assistance, rental assistance, and lots of other programs. It's kind of a joint healthcare and housing initiative. So how much money do we get? Right now, we're sitting at about 1.7 million in CDBG, 1.1, 1.2 million in Home, and about $860,000 in HAPWA. Now, right now, we are using last year's numbers. HUD usually gets us the numbers out by this point in the process, but they haven't quite yet, so they issued guidance on how to move forward to make sure we stay in compliance and stay on the timeline. So we're using last year's numbers until we get an update from them. Council will have one more official action to actually adopt the budget closer to July. That's when we'll have our real numbers updated in there, but we don't expect them to fluctuate too much. You can kind of see over the years, they go up in increments or go down, so it won't be a dramatic change. So as I said, these are called entitlement grants, which means we get them directly from HUD. They think that we know best in our community on how to spend this money. And so we talked about in total, those entitlements equal $3.7 million. We generate some program income through issuing loans to businesses and developers that do affordable housing, so that's going to bring in about $327,000 next year. And then there's a home match from the city, so that comes from our general fund and helps match those grants, and that's $280,000. So all in, that's about $4.3 million that we get to execute programs to improve our community, and then we've got a little bit of prior year money left over in CDBG, about $400,000. $446,000. So the process we lay out every year starts in November where we open up and talk to a bunch of nonprofits in the community about how to apply for funds, what those funds can be used for, and what the city looks for in, in scoring those applications and recommending them for funding. We put a draft plan together in February and put it out for the community to talk about for 30 days. During that 30 days, we go around to different places in the city, at different rec centers, and have community meetings to talk about that plan and do a similar presentation to this one. Then we meet with our council-appointed commission, that's our Citizen Advisory Board, the Redevelopment Commission. They then adopt that plan and recommend it for city council's approval. Came to a work session a few weeks ago, and then we're here tonight for our public hearing. Then we submit that plan to HUD, and we get ready to roll in July. So there's a bunch of little details and regulations, and I won't spend too much time on this, but essentially, we're only allowed to give out $277,000 to nonprofits in our community. So since I've been in charge of the department for about four years now, we have maxed out that amount of money that we can give to nonprofits in the community. We have about 20% for administration, which is $370,000. That helps the general fund by paying for some of the staff that you saw up here tonight so that our local property taxes only offset a, a portion of those staff members. And then we've also got a CHODO set aside. So a CHODO is a community housing development organization. It's a nonprofit that has people from the community on its board. So instead of giving the money to, to for-profit developers, we are required to at least give 15% of our annual grant to a nonprofit. And so in this case, we work with Habitat for Humanity to build single-family houses for homeownership. So this is a very, very high level of the grant broken out into our five-year strategies. So you can see that we've had just a slight change in economic development, increase in community development, a slight change in, in housing going down, and increase in the money that we're funding for homeless initiatives. We had no special needs applications this year. Last year, we funded the Vision Resource Center for a project. We didn't have any types of that category nonprofit apply this year. And then administration is same as last year until we get our new grant amount. For Home, it's largely same as last year until we get that new grant amount with the one caveat of we've got a little bit less money until we get program income payments. Those loans get repaid over time, and so once we receive a lump sum one, that, that'll help us fund these activities moving forward as well. We did make a little bit of a change in our housing, Opportunities for People with HIV and AIDS. We put a little bit of money aside to help with private developers to build apartments and to use that money earmarked for these types of programs. So what we were finding is that even though our team did a great job of maximizing the fair market rent and, and making these programs as broad and effective as possible, there's still not enough available housing. So we're putting some money in to try to create a couple of rooms a year in those larger apartments for this program. We are working on a substantial amendment, so going back to that program income I talked about when we repay loans. So last year, when we adopted our budget, we were anticipating a $380,000 payment. The developer reached out to us and said that due to rising interest rates, they weren't able to refinance and pay us off without substantially impacting the rents of the folks in the apartment complex. So council elected to extend their loan by 10 years. And so we're going to have to come back at, at a future meeting once this is approved and reduce our budget by that amount as well. So I like doing this every year. We do a lot of work to put this plan together, and so I do want to give y'all some takeaways to be proud of. Our team put an online application, application portal out, so people, instead of submitting us paper copies, and they send them in the mail, they go online and can apply for the grant through, through a web-based process. My assistant director, Alex Baker, went out and did two workshops based on homelessness, youth engagement, and mental health. And so we talked to agencies who work in those spaces and told them, this is what our grants are for, and these are the types of programs we're looking for. We also got a constant contact, and so anybody we meet throughout the year, when y'all send us somebody who's interested in grants, they go on our list, and it goes out to them every time we get new information and something comes up. For housing development, we've continued funding new single-family developments and gap financing for those apartments. We put a brand-new low-income housing tax credit policy in place. Our policy before really only let us give money to one developer a year. That was all we had in our community. Well, things have changed recently, and we're getting four, five, six applications now, and so we needed a new policy that told us how to fairly and equitably put that money out on the street. Economic development, we're working on a, a policy right now to be able to access the city's ability to borrow against these grant funds for, for very impactful projects, and that's called the Section 108 program. Those of you who've been on council for a while can remember, we did that a while back, but we don't have it as a normal thing that we do. And so we're working on a policy to be able to describe that to developers and work with them to help build our city. So the next steps in timeline we talked about tonight is our public hearing, and then we'll submit it to HUD, and we'll get rolling in July. And so now it would be time for the public hearing, and then after that, we'd be looking for council's action to approve this.
Mr. Colley, let's see if we had any questions. I don't see. Annie, can you go, I think you touched it. So the, the money, can you go back to the chart that shows the breakdown of the grants? The HOPAs where I'm headed with that. So I know you said that you were putting some of the allocations aside to help maybe build, or someone, a partner come in and build a few of these. What about last year's money? Did you find a place to give this?
So, so we work with a group called the Dogwood Healthcare Network, and, and that's exactly the issue we're having, is that they're not spending the money fast enough because of the lack of available units. And so we're holding some money, they've got plenty of rollover to fully fund their program, and so that we can invest that money in building some new.
Okay. All right. All right, council, any other questions, comments? All right, you said a question?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I just have one question. It just popped up real quick. Out of the $477,000, I believe, we went to nonprofits. How many are repetitive?
So we did 277 to nonprofits. So Alex, do you, do you have any? Come here. I'm using my assistant director. He's, he took over the nonprofit funding this year and did an amazing job, so, yes, he is.
Right off topic, connections, there may be two. But typically, we try not to. It's a capacity building to strengthen resiliency in our community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now, does this include, I guess that was probably different because it was funded with general fund dollars. What about like the smaller agencies, Greater Life and those? Where do they fall under this category?
Yeah, so Greater Life had been our partner in this funding source for a couple of years. They didn't put in a grant this year. She just said that things are crazy. She's getting grants from a lot of different places, and she, she's probably needs to hire some more staff to keep up with how successful she's going.
Good.
We did have a couple of agencies that worked through some, some funding that the, the city council made available, general fund dollars, about $200,000. And so we had some smaller groups who actually applied for grant funding. So we've worked with them intensively for the past two years, and they were now equipped to take federal money, and so they applied through this program and got funded as well.
Okay, good.
And all the agencies that we funded are in your agenda packet.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, council, any other questions for Mr. Colley? All right, good job, sir. Did you need official access on this?
Yes, sir. We need a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we need.
And then, and then vote to council's pleasure.
Got you. All right, so we're there, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
We have no speakers for this item.
All right, well, we'll close the public hearing. Council, look to you for action to remove, to receive the report? Or did you need, did you need approval on it, Mr. Colley? Or is this just a public hearing?
Uh, no, sir. Yeah, so the motion is actually on the presentation right there to approve the proposed plan so that we can submit it to HUD.
Got you. All right, Councilmember Har.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'm going to follow what our director requested that we approve and adopt the 2024-2025 Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Har, seconded by Councilmember Mahondros, discussion on that motion? All right, council, look to you for your vote. Very good, very good. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thank you.
All right, council, moving to the next item of business, authorization to apply for a North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Grant for Phillips Towing. Mr. Colley, you're back again. Money man, the money man is what they say.
You know, it's Community Development Month after all. We decided we'd stay busy. So, so I apologize, this actually should have been a consent item. This is a grant program you guys have seen lots of times before. It helps businesses invest in capital in our community, but also requires them to hire additional jobs. And so Phillips Towing in particular is looking to expand its operations. They are going to have a corporate office and call center to serve all of eastern North Carolina, based out of Fayetteville. If you're familiar with their location, just right outside of downtown, the part of this grant, substantial capital improvement, and they will be cleaning up that area and also buying the location across the street and turning that into their office space. So great investment in our community, couldn't have done it without our partners at Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation.
All right, good deal. Always glad to hear that. Council, any questions for this? All right, so entertain a motion to, to approve. I see Councilmember Mahondros, just see your hand, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the attached resolution, authorize mayor and city manager to sign the grant application.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Mahondros, seconded by Councilmember Har. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right, council, it looks now the action for the administrative report. Councilmember Har.
Okay, Mayor. Well, thank you. I was thinking that we had already taken care of this.
No, sir, you were ready.
Okay, okay, okay. I, I thought that what, only what my concern was, which we already took action on earlier...
Well, if you want to move, if, if you're okay, you can move one or both of these items to a work session, or nine, if you choose to do it.
Uh, no, sir, Mayor. I'll, I'll just move forward with that. I, I thought that we, well, nevertheless, I would like to make a motion, Mayor, that we move item 10.01 and 10.02 of our administrative reports. All right, before I go there, hold, hold on, before I do that, let me ask the city manager or our city attorney, just to be sure. On item 10.01, they just gave us an update, and they, it was, do we need to move forward for you all to, because you all want to do the application, move forward the application anyway, correct?
Yes, sir.
So do I still need to?
Only if you want to discuss it any further.
No, no, okay. So I won't do that because that's already was done. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move administrative report item, potential tech, potential text amendments regarding Chapter 30 regarding tobacco and hemp retail to a work session, please.
All right, so this is a motion by Councilmember Har to move 10.02 as stated, second was